I. Our number one. She's the heckler.
Oh.
City of Alpine dot com forward slash meeting.
I'm so sorry.
City of Alpine.
Dot com forward slash meeting.
Okay, city Alpine. And I'll turn off my phone once I get this.
And so it'll be on the first page of the city website and the news articles as well.
Okay, forward slash median link or just me?
Medium.
Okay.
We're trying to call Dopper to sound. Just.
Well. Didn't work one second.
That's the first page of the city website as well.
No, that's it's on the city. He may be on his phone too. He does a lot of build work and he's probably got the same issue city about.
Did you give them everywhere?
Um, yeah, pretty much. So the building official will typically sit here. Is Drew coming tonight?
He's big.
Okay, you want to sit over here? The mic will catch you but over here. And that's another reason the audience will get.
Make this.
No problem.
Do you know what's going for?
We can go ahead and begin. Once Michael is able to log in.
Okay.
It was kind of there. But we do have.
Slurping out when he's up there.
Okay. You bring the big bag.
I think we can go ahead and start with Adam. He will on him probably.
Well, yeah, I. Think that it. Make sure that it. Yeah, I sent him that. If you login on here.
Okay, I'll go forward with it. Call this meeting to order. And we will start with. First item, public comments.
We have no public comments this evening.
Public comments.
Unless you wanted to make one though.
Sound good. I'm just not gonna say what. This is unusual.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next public hearings. Gio, would you be kind enough to read the first one?
Yes, absolutely. First item, public hearing A is approve an application for a replat to allow applicant Don Cadden to divide one lots and two lots. The property in question is located in 2011 Peachtree Circle and is legally described in lot six of block one to Alpine, wants the state city of Alpine, Brewster County, Texas. The property ID of the subject property is three five five nine one. The record property owner is Don Cadden. The current zoning of the property is our former home district. The zoning classification if the replat approved will remain our core mobile home district.
Thank you. Okay, go on to the next one.
A public hearing B is approve an application for a replat to allow the applicant John Scott Turner to combine lots on the subject property. The property in question is legally described as lot thirteen, block A six, famous heights edition, city of Alpine, Brewster County, Texas, as the same appears in records on file in the office of the county clerk of Brewster County, Texas. The record property owner is John Scott Turner. The property ID of the subject property is three five five two eight. The current zoning of the property is R two family district. The zoning classification if the replat is approved will remain R two family district.
Thank you, Gio. And would you mind reading the last one?
Sure. Public hearing items C is approve an application for a replat to allow the applicant Kelly DePrado to separate lots for sale. The property in question is located at four oh six and four oh eight East Nations and is legally described as lots eight and nine, block one fifteen, harm in addition to the city of Alpine Brewster County, Texas, as per a plat on file and envelope number ninety four. Lot records out of survey forty two and one oh one, block nine, P H and S A R Y. CEO surveys Brewster County, Texas. The record property owner is Kelly DePrado. The property ID of the subject property is one, two, three, two, three. The current zoning of the property is R two family district. The zoning classification if the replat is approved will remain R two family district.
Thank you very much. You go on to the next item, signing a statement of officer by commissioners.
And the Honorable Judge Gilbert Von Sutter will take it from there.
Okay, Judge.
Thank you. More members, you have a piece of paper you need to sign first. Once you've completed the signing, we'll start with the swearing in. That are. That gentleman?
Yes, the name's Michael.
Michael? Is your audio on?
I don't hear it. Uh, he is.
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, do you? Oh, he's gonna sign these when he goes in, right?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
He can take the open.
Yeah, we're gonna swear you in just a second. Once everybody's signed. Everyone signed?
One, one second, Judge. Okay, we're good, Your Honor.
Okay, Michael? Yes. Would you stand and raise your right hand? Everyone please stand and raise your right hand. And please repeat after me. I state your name.
Hi.
I'm Michael Leeson.
Do solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of.
The Planning and Zoning Commission.
Planning and Zoning Commission.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will do the best of my ability.
Will do the best. And do the best of my ability.
Reserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
That's what I'm gonna do.
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations. You may now sit down. Gio?
Yeah.
I'm gonna excuse myself.
Thank you, Judge. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes of the previous board meeting, October twenty fourth. Twenty two. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or take away from minutes?
I do. Um, I don't Lucy Escovedo was here.
No, you think she was absent at that meeting?
Pretty certain she was absent. She had a last minute trial with a peacock, I think. And let her confuse me. Yeah, if anybody else can remember too, but I'm pretty sure she wasn't here.
Okay, then you all can go ahead and approve the minutes. Somebody makes a motion to approve the minutes with that amendment.
Any other changes or additions? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the minutes as is with the recommended change?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with recommended change.
Okay, a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a motion second. All in favor, we're accepting the minutes from October twenty fourth with the recommended change. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Guys have it. Discussion items. First one, discussion between commissioners and city staff regarding procedural items, questions, and or recent planning and zoning related items. I'll open it up. The commissioners, anyone can go if you'd like. No? Okay.
I do have a couple of things. So, um, although we will touch on ordinance two thousand twenty three dash channel three here in, well, actually the next item. Uh, I did want to mention that city council has made board appointments for representatives. So we do have Mayor Eves here. She's gonna be the board representative for planning and zoning. Every board commission and committee now has an official council representative.
Thank you, Gio.
Other than that, I do want to just also let you all know that I have some documents in your black folders to sign. And if you could go ahead and sign those at the end of the meeting and leave them for me. I appreciate that as well.
Anything else? No. Okay, let's move on to the second one. Discuss ordinance twenty twenty two dash ten dash zero three and the official boards, commissioners, and committees handbook.
Alright, so. The city council did pass ordinance two thousand twenty two dash ten that zero three. And a memo was sent to all members to explain key changes in operation going forward. And this discussion item is being added to facilitate a conversation regarding the changes and for the commission to address city staff with any questions that they might have. I did include in your package just an abstract, a memo just going over all the key changes. But did y'all have any questions?
Any comments? Okay, I guess let us read over it and then we'll just put on the agenda for next.
Okay, yeah, if y'all have any questions, you can feel welcome to go look to Paul or discuss at the next meeting.
Okay. Let's do that. Okay, next item, discuss resolution twenty twenty two dash eleven dash zero two. The city council resolution tasking the planning and zoning commission with key objectives fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three.
Okay, so the city council did pass resolution one of twenty two dash eleven dash zero two, tasking the planning and zoning commission with keys and objectives for the upcoming year. Other boards have assigned each objective to a member and had each member report their findings and meeting. This item is being added to discuss the commission's plan going forward to address the objectives by the appropriate deadlines.
Okay.
So a copy of the resolution was provided in the packet. As you can see, uh, the sections that have been tasked are ordinance review, zoning map, comprehensive zoning plans, historic district, control growth of stores being detrimental to small economies, in-person visits, and reporting. Does the commission have any questions on any of these items or? Anything else?
So in order to fulfill these objectives, over the course of the year, we're gonna get information on it, or is it a task to investigate it or bring it forward or what?
Yes, so basically, this item is being added for facilitate the conversation, but essentially, what the board would want to do as a commission um, is you would want to take a look at the objectives and make a plan as to how the commission can execute the objectives. For example, ordinance reviews. The current ordinances should be reviewed, amended, and updated to conform with state law and planning and zoning best practices. The board is tasked with reviewing the ordinances and recommending changes that benefit the city. So for this item, you know, you might see an area of concern in our current ordinances, and you might recommend, you know, to update the certain ordinance and make that recommendation to city council. So other boards have basically tasked each of these items to their board members. And at each each meeting, the board member would provide updates. I think that might be a good way to go, but it's up to the commission how you want to take care of it.
Any comments from the commissioners on this?
Now, do we plan, do we workshop? This, I mean, do we plan various workshops? We evaluate because it's hard to squeeze those in sometimes. I mean, there's a lot to do.
It is, which is why I think that assigning each task to one specific member, um, and then that member can come back with ideas. For example, with the ordinances, like I said, that one's a pretty easy one because you could look and see, okay, this is out of date. This needs to be updated. Let's make a recommendation. The next meeting, if you have each, if you assign it to each member, each time you could kind of, everybody could kind of add to the conversation and see what might work best. Um, the zoning map is another good example. We have a zoning map that hasn't been updated since twenty thirteen. Uh, and we really need to update it. So that means that every zoning change that's happened by ordinance since twenty thirteen is not reflected on this zoning map right here. Um, I can tell you that that one would consist of going through the ordinances, finding the ordinances that actually changed zonings and writing down that number. So all the council minutes are available online and all zoning changes would have had to be passed by ordinance. So if somebody, you know, wants to go ahead and assist with that, they can just take down all the ordinance numbers. Then I could collect all of the ordinances, get that map inserted to an engineer and have them updated. You see what I'm saying? So that's what I'd recommend for that item. But, um, all of these items, like I said, I think it's, it's good to have them as a discussion for the commission to workshop it and say, okay, well, how can we do this? And to have each member present updates at each meetings.
And are there due dates for these?
There are. So in the resolution, you'll see, for example, uh, ordinance review, that deadline, it doesn't really have a specific deadline for that one. Uh, it is ongoing with ordinance review. The zoning map, the deadline is by the end of the year, the fiscal year, so that's September twenty twenty three. Comprehensive zoning plan again is by September twenty twenty three. Um, you'll actually see that most of them are by the end of this fiscal year, so then. So, you know, the commission would want to meet to try to meet that goal. Um, but I mean, as long as the effort being put in, I'm pretty sure the council will be okay and agreeable to just, you know, having some sort of conversation started and progress towards these goals.
So then. I have a suggestion. Why don't we then have a workshop for next meeting?
Okay, so.
Yes. So we can argue everything and then we can divide it up on ourselves.
It was a chance to read this.
Yeah.
Okay. Can we do that?
Time?
Yes.
Make a workshop.
Yes.
That sounds good. Okay.
What is considered out of date? One of them says two thousand thirteen. Is that kind of?
That is very out.
It's very out. So what is like the least out of date? That we should be looking for, like, five?
Um, I'm not sure.
Yeah, no question. So. So the only thing that's updated in two thousand seventeen is that out of date?
I'd say, yeah, with the zoning, I mean, you're having so many changes that it's minimum every five years, you probably want to update the map, if not sooner every few.
Two or three. So we need to go back the last ten years.
Yes, effectively. And like I said, if you. All of the minutes are online. So if somebody wanted to go through those and say, okay, ordinance two thousand thirteen oh four oh four, that one changed the zoning. You know, mark that down, send it to me. I'll get the copy and compile them. Um, we can get the map updated that way. That one should be a pretty easy one, to be honest.
And I've currently been working on the zoning ordinance um, since before the holidays. So I can bring that to the next meeting to show you the edits that I done. Um, just from things that I've noticed with me working with the public that need to be updated. Um, with you guys not facing the public and the major concern that we see every day, you can kind of see where just very basic things need to be changed. And that way, when you're navigating the ordinance, if you catch something for recommendation, um, you'll kind of see what I'm looking at and what, what we see as a problem. But because a lot of it's just not clear enough. It doesn't make any sense. It contradicts itself or, um, it just doesn't make any sense and it needs to be clarified. So.
Okay, let's, let's add that to the workshop.
And so Jessica is actually the, one of the pioneers of the comprehensive zoning plan. I don't mind. We've been talking about it for a while. The historic district has been, I'm sure that Abby's been trying to visit for quite some time. Um, after the incident with the dollar store, one of the council members, um, thought that the commission should work with cities which have developed ordinances to control the growth of stores or chain, which have been widely accepted to cause damage to all local economies. So I mean, for that one, if the commissioner says, hey, this city is doing X, Y, and Z to prevent, you know, situations like that from happening, that'd be, you know, the best thing, I think, to prevent the commission and make a formal recommendation to council. Um, in-person visits, that item, what's basically just about commissioners making in-person visits to sites that are considered are new or different type of zoning. Um, and then, of course, the commission does need to provide updates to the city council at least quarterly. So generally, the chair will do that or.
Okay.
We have to do those individually?
Yes, because you, I mean, you could go with more than one person, but you want to be wary not to create it one, right? You have any other question?
I liked the idea of the workshop.
Okay, I think we're taking a first step. Let's go with that. Alright. We'll have more questions once we understand your questions.
I'll get it out of place.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, without any more questions, we'll move on. Item number D, discuss the findings of the commission's handbook and any proposed amendments. I think we already covered that, that we're just gonna read it and then at the next meeting, whatever items you'd like to discuss, we can do at that time.
Thank you. That's nice.
Yes, you're welcome. So that's what we want to do with the planning or commissioners handbook. Um, we want to provide something like that to be members so they have more of an idea. So I think it's really a great project that the commission is workshopping this. Just took a lot of time to put it together. Um, and so I know this has been been discussed at quite a few of the past meetings. So if y'all have any recommendations, please send them to us. Email me. Um, that way I could kind of get something growing. But the one you have in your package is the most up to date as of yet.
Thank you. Uh, next item E, discuss the two thousand sixteen Alpine vision plan.
And I, I moved that we tabled this. And the reason why is because we had a representative that had, um, helped develop the two thousand sixteen vision plan. He was gonna speak with us tonight, but he had a family, um, emergency or funeral. And so I would like somebody to go over it with us because two thousand sixteen was quite a while ago and they're updating that. They're in the process of updating that. And so Rick Stevens said he could come to the next meeting or and go over it with us.
Okay, um, we don't really need a motion to.
Okay.
If the commission is okay with that, we can do.
I'm fine if y'all want to take a look at it. I mean, it's, it's interesting what I've seen. Yeah, but I don't know enough about it to speak about it. Maybe somebody here does.
Okay. Um, I honestly don't. And I don't, I don't think that any of us do because it's before our time.
Okay.
I have read through it well, but I don't have to speak to it.
Okay, okay.
But it, like I said, if y'all are okay with that, we can just go ahead and move that into the next.
Okay.
To the next one. Okay, next item F, discuss the creation of historic district and the current historical overlay.
That one is committed for branch.
Okay, so we, um, I'm still uncertain about the current historic overlay, although I know that there is one. I think we, we discussed this last time, but it was never implemented.
Well, we did have an ordinance pass is ordinance twenty eleven oh one oh one, and that one is in, was included in your packet.
Okay.
So I think that's about it. It's been.
Right. Um, so it is there. It's just maybe it didn't make it somewhere. I think we couldn't find it. I guess now it's.
I think that they had intentions of, you know, um, doing the historic district and making the overlay and they packed the ordinance, but I don't think it went very far.
Right. Well, and the issue was, and we talked about this last time, is that it was the, the proposed or the proposed district was too broad.
It looked too broad.
Yeah. So during our last meeting, we talked about, um, having a smaller, just a downtown historic district. And I, I sent a PowerPoint kind of last minute. If you, I don't know if you're able to pull it up and share it, Gio? Or do we need to, where it's just, it's a map where I drew it. We have the, the, um, his visitor center. There's the historic walking tour that the, um, historic association put together years ago. And there's a map on there, the downtown buildings. So I proposed, I, I outlined a few blocks that, you know, I, I would like to talk about that I thought would be a good start for historic districts, starting at the courthouse. Because there, there's, starting at the courthouse and going down Sixth Street in front of the Holland Hotel. So you have all that the Holland Hotel. And then it would actually wrap around and end at the Alpine Avalanche Building.
Okay, so I'm, I'm sorry. I just wanted to confirm. If you look in the packet there, did I include the map that you sent with?
Here. That's what the.
My dear.
Because I know that you provided quite a few documents and I did add them, um. It might be an alternative one this.
Is it the central business district? That's, that's the old thing.
I have quite a few.
That's the nineteen sixty six. These are all.
When did you send that?
Oh, just today.
Oh. You're talking about the one from Bernie.
Right. And if you sent, there's just a little, did I attach it?
And this one is related to the historic district, right?
Right. And what it is, just the map that you can blow up if you're able to share it. I mean.
Is it a map of Bernie?
No, no, it's, I maybe I didn't attach it to you.
I only have the Bernie item.
Okay, hang on. That's because I didn't attach it. All right, do you, let me, I can do it quickly.
Okay.
I can even airdrop it. You can, can we airdrop here?
Um, I'm not too sure.
And then I, I followed Bernie's historic overlay. And that was with Wendy's recommendation because she's from there and they have a great, um, they have a historic district and a reasonable overlay. All right, let me.
I think if you want, we can just, um, also add it for the next meeting.
Okay.
It's better that it's conceived by the.
By the.
And whatnot to get into the backend.
Okay, okay, that's fine. And what it is, it was just a proposed map. And then some ideas on what how a, um, overlay, historic district with overlay could help, help, help us. And it also made sense for this, this area because we have two registered landmarks. That is. We already have, you know, the, the courthouse is, is a registered landmark. The Holland Hotel is a registered landmark. What page is that?
It says name of page. So it's a historic walking for then what the other ones.
In the middle.
Yeah, in the middle.
The middle.
Alpine historic walk-in tour.
Yes.
With the ordinance. It's everything.
We're here to, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, but this is, yeah, but this is, um, but this is not the proposed district. This was the original proposed district. It was too large. So if we all, if we look on our page where there's number thirty nine, did everybody? So if we all, if we looked on our page where there's number thirty-nine, did everybody find it?
Let me see your page.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
It's page forty-two of the digital file in case Michael wants to look it up.
So if the proposed district, this is what I think. That would make sense, and it would be reasonable, because it's not a, it's it's all commercial buildings, and you would have. The the building owners could participate or elect not to participate. It isn't something that if you own a building, you do not want to participate. You have to, because now you're in the district. Wait, my pen isn't working. So if you see number thirty-nine, that's the courthouse. And so what I propose is that you would start, you know, that whole block would be part of the historic district. And you would go up. Sixth Street, all of Sixth Street. And then it goes in front of DC number thirteen where the Holland Hotel is. That block. And then you would then, and then it wraps around the buildings thirty-five, thirty-six, fourteen. Wait, wait, maybe I'm wrong. Wait, wait, no, no, no. It wraps around to buildings fifteen, sixteen and ends at thirty-one, so it doesn't go down. In front of the, in front of your theater. We could, if you think that would help, y'all want to do that. This, it would go down. So from thirteen. Fifteen, sixteen, and then end at thirty-one. So you have. And on my little PowerPoint that was shared, it's nicely outlined, so you can see, you know, it's. It's easy to comprehend. So that is what, you know, I think would be a reasonable historic district to start.
Sounds good.
And and then we also would need to identify, and this is what we could use Matt's help with. The style of architecture, the style of buildings that we currently have. Yeah, and some of it I know, and some of it's kind of hodgepodge, and on the. I should say, shouldn't say hodgepodge, but on the. The PowerPoint that I I created today, I, there's a style called Main Street Commercial. Which is what we have a lot of, you know, there's a two-part commercial block, and we would identify, like, these are the types of buildings. And we would also identify. You know, if someone wants to raise a building, you know, what what is the protocol? If they want to drastically alter. The, you know, the front of a building. You know, what is, what is the protocol? There would need to be some type of. Which I would think would be planning and zoning, or maybe we work with another, you know, develop a historic commission that would then oversee. Submittals. So you would have every, you know, building owner, if you had somebody that maybe wanted to build an empty lot. You know, that like the the Napa Building is a great example. The Napa Building was raised. Last year, it was our oldest. We think our oldest downtown building had a bunch of issues, we know that. But now we have an empty lot there, right by this, you know, proposed historic district. So what type of of building would make sense for Holland Avenue? Is it an avenue? That wouldn't, yeah, that. Isn't going to. You know, depreciate if it's built, it's not going to depreciate the the value of the Holland, or it's also, we want it to continue to contribute to our culture and heritage.
So we want to kind of come up, create a list of guidelines, but they're not. They're not rules. Or are we saying that the people. Once the historic district is created. That they have to go by the guidelines or it's just suggested guidelines?
Well, it it would, an overlay would mean that they would have to, if they're participating property.
We don't want a dollar store, don't we?
I I mean, if if we don't have. We we can't, if if the dollar store decided to move right there. You know, right next to the Holland and the empty lot. There's nothing we could do at this point without any, right?
When you, when you establish your guidelines for the historical district, whether it's the type of construction. Like adobe or stucco fi- finish or whatever it is that you guys decide on based off of the history of those buildings. Then when they come into our office and they want to build, we would let notify them. That it won't, won't pass any permitting processes without them conforming to the historical district.
Right.
And so that's where it would stop. I mean, it's just like the dark skies ordinance, when somebody wants to come and build something. Because we pass that ordinance, it, when they come to do get permits through our office, they have to be notified and sign the, an agreement. Saying that they would comply with the dark skies ordinance, so if they're in the historical, we would have some sort of permit just for dark. Or just for the Alpine Historical District, and we would know those blocks and what your guidance regulations, whether it's. Sometimes at the historical, you can't paint it a certain color, you can't have a certain, like, you can't have a metal building. Like, you have to have your your own set of rules for that. So, once you guys establish that, because right now there's not any. So technically, you could put a metal building right there, and there would be nobody stopping it, because we really don't have that identified yet. So that's why it's really important that if you want to protect that downtown area, that you want to work quickly to get those. Those ideas of what you don't want to see down there and what you do want to see and and where it matches in history, so that when you have. Somebody coming to build there, we have those set guidelines.
Start to do real quick, because the owner's going to build some pretty quick, so you need to get.
Well, so that, yeah, so they would submit an application, exactly like they normally would for building, and then there would be a review process. To where they would submit their plan. Real plan.
It's just like an R one, like, if somebody wants to build in an R one, they have to be meet all of these criteria. And so with the downstairs downtown historical district, they'd have to meet that criteria. And so it'd just be overlapped into like a a C one or C two, if they lay, it's probably mostly C two there. So if it was in those, that block that you guys adopt as that section, they would have to comply with that. So do we have to meet before? Like, I don't really know what comes before what. So if we decide, okay, just say what you said, this is it. And then what's the next step? Like, do we have to talk to all of the business owners that we're wanting to place into this area?
Of course, we're going to need to get their input. We're putting a burden on these business owners, so they, we would want to get their feedback.
But the people, okay, say everybody's for it, but what if, okay, because you have a business, a building there, and we create a historical district. And. Those buildings already like grandfathered in, I mean, they don't have to like make changes according to what we're planning.
You can have participating and non-participating, so you could still have a historic district. And have fifty percent of the buildings participate. And the other fifty are like, we're not doing that. So are contributing, they're called, it's contributing. Yeah, yeah, contributing. So you can have non-contributing properties and contributing properties. And so. Majority of of the folks that own the historical, the Holland Hotel, I mean, that that Sixth Street, all the Sixth Street buildings, I mean, it is. I would say that they all have invested in these these buildings. They don't want to see their properties depreciate. I mean, more than likely, they're going to be on board. I mean, who knows, maybe they're not. But it isn't, it doesn't keep them, okay, they have a. There's certain things, like there's roots, like if you have a new room. That they don't have to come through the planning and or the the, they don't have to get to the review process.
Mainly the facade, what's visible to the public.
Yeah, in interior.
Or contributing. If Ahmet wants to paint his building bright green and then his next-door neighbor.
If if Ahmet wasn't contributing, he could paint his building bright green, he could raise his building. But Ahmet's not, but we, but this isn't, but we're, the the historic district won't go in front of. Ahmet's building, but if it did, I mean, the first one, yeah, I mean.
Wrap my head around how that would work if one does and one doesn't.
Well, what I think what they want is if there were majority due, it 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 helps as property.
Okay. And we can still write the guidelines.
It's going to be important that we get them on board, go to the neighborhood, that block. Get their uh feedback on it.
Could that be like something that's like a town hall or a forum or something where, I mean, we just.
Yeah.
We have to like look up all the owners and.
It's going to have to be grassroots like anything else. We'll have to go to each one of them, and then based on their feedback, then we have like. A workshop, have a meeting, and discuss it. And then this architecture, will we have to put together a group that will, that can research what this?
We can search exactly like what the style of architecture is, you know, because we probably have like a vernacular Texas, West Texas thing, and. You know, then, yeah, no, we would have to put that together, and that's what I can help with. I think Matt can probably help me. Yeah, but but we have, we are a historian. You know, we can, and we have a museum on, we may be able to look some stuff up.
Might be in descriptions.
That can also help.
So if you have it participating and non-participating, does that mean that the ones who aren't participating don't have to follow any of the guidelines?
That's that's correct, yeah.
Because wouldn't you want something a little more longer lasting? Further to that area, for example, like you can't build a metal building, like she said. And have the other businesses be grandfathered in.
You know, I, that is a question for the Texas Historic Commission. That we, and I can ask, because I, that that is a confusing thing. We had a speaker at our last, one of the historic Alpine meeting. That touched on that.
But I would think we could say. You can't do something new, and this, you know, you got to maintain this style for something new.
I mean, do some. I don't remember how Bernie did it. It was all all or nothing, or do they have the participating and not?
They have some participating and some non, or contributing.
It's okay.
Some contributing, some non-contributing.
Some of it's going to need legal advice too, I guarantee.
And 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 just so you know, I'm not the one that just first time brought it up to Alpine. This was discussed for months and months and maybe years. In the Planning and Zoning Commission, before I ever was on the board.
It's about here.
Yes, here, and it just came to a screeching halt. I think, Alan, was it during COVID?
No, it was way before that. COVID kind of helped us not talk about it anymore. Because it was going nowhere.
And it was going nowhere, because it was my understanding, and you you were here, so you may, you'll know a lot more than I do. Is that it was because it was so broad and it affected so many.
It was just getting broader and broader and broader, and it was, nobody was wanting to just keep it like you do, which you got the right idea. We had people that wanted to get, no, we have to keep this house in here, we got to keep this, this building's got to come in there too. I mean, we were stretching out.
Right.
Everywhere, as you can see from them.
I'm just saying, you know, y'all have the opportunity to pass something. And as we've seen, our residents would be very opposed to a dollar store going there. What's to stop that?
Nothing, right.
I think that it's good for y'all revisiting it and. Put something in place.
So this dollar store thing, are we saying that part of this? Project, is that we're going to restrict what businesses can not be downtown?
Not necessarily. I think you would be putting things in a place that, you know, I mean. That type of business probably wouldn't want to be located there because of the.
It's not that we can stop the business from being there, but we can stop the business from what it looks like.
Yeah.
The type of building, so it's considered a building standard. And so that's what you would create. I mean, obviously, somebody could come in. And ask for a variance, because they don't, that's why I don't really understand why you'd want some to comply and want some not to comply. If you made it an ordinance, and somebody wanted a variance because it it was a hindrance to them for some reason financially. Or if what whoever has a building now that's not in compliance with that, so let's say. One of the buildings downtown in the historical don't actually fit into that criteria. They're grandfathered in, but whoever takes on that building, knowing that that's what it is, and they want to restore it or remodel it. They would have to come up to code in the sense of what the ordinance considers to be historical for that area. They couldn't just do whatever they want with that building. They had to actually have that standard, that building standard in place, and that's what I'm thinking would be better, the better way of attacking it. But I mean, obviously, you'd need to make make, like, look at a legal perspective, because I know, like, I'll pass, so they have rules on what type of fence you can build, and. And and they want it to look a certain kind of way, and with a historical district, you want it to look a certain kind of way. So in order for you to have that control, you definitely want to make sure that you have it written properly, and you're not making it a hindrance on anybody, but at the same time. Anybody can file for variance, and so that would come before you and be like, I have to have this way, because my property lies a certain kind of way, or I was, you know, whatever the reason. But I would think any new building going in would want to fit that historical look. And anybody that restores it or purchases it, and it's not in compliance, that they would have, if they do touch it. Just like an electrician, if they touch electrical, they have to bring it up to code. If they do want to restore it or paint it or change the outside, the windows and the doors and the outside would have to be in compliance with the historical.
Right.
You know.
So it seems like, I mean, this is all preliminary, but it would seem like this is a two-track thing. One, we need to come up with a look. What is it that we want this this historic district to look like? And then two, once you have that look, I think we need to go in business to business and talk with the owners. And say, this is what we're thinking, this is what the look is, and then get their feedback. Because we don't want to put up an ordinance and then have people. Say, why are you, you know.
I know, like, for example, Artesia in Mexico's done amazing jobs downtown, but. Of course, you have places like Santa Fe, New Mexico, where you. Do not don't have adobe though. We need to find out.
So how do we do, what what do we do about legal, if we need legal? Advice.
Well, why don't we first.
Everything first.
Yeah, let's first get the look. Take what we have to the di- different business owners and go from there. And what their feedback will inform us of what to do, I would think.
And meanwhile, we need to know what the architecture is before we know what our book is, right?
There's usually like five or six different styles, and you know, we'll.
There's actually a title for that, two-story, the one. Uh with the balcony up on top, there's a name for all that, so.
Yeah, like frontier, something like, I don't know why the word frontier keeps coming in my head.
When you can, if you can all visit, I I did, Bredeberg has a good one. Bernie has had a good one. It's on there, like, you just go to historic district Bernie, and it brings up all of the, even brings up why they have some participating or.
Contributed.
Contributing. Why not? Um, you know, the types of style, you know, what the rules of engagement are. I mean, it is, we have to do some more research. And I can do, I can bring a lot, we can add on to the PowerPoint that I started, I sent you today. And maybe next meeting we go over that, and then we can identify the style by then, hopefully. Uh, you know, I'll go around and talk to some of the business owners. I have been in communication with you. Already.
Do you, last thing, we get a list, I mean, do you want help? Or how do we know who owns what?
Well, in the, well.
Where can we find like a list of?
I think it's pretty.
And you could just kind of even look on a map and click and see who owns it. Let's Brewster co-tag.org, and you can email me if you want me to send that to you.
Sure. I also think that, so if we do, if you do have contributing buildings. Holland Hotel, that that. When if they had, if they sold it, the buyer then could not say, okay, I'm not contributing, like, once it's, once it's a contributing. Building, it always is, it protects it.
Yeah, that's the way I understand it.
Are you seeing any that aren't contributing and non-contributing?
It's it's usually, you know, like, if you have a. Somehow like an old garage in the middle of the town, like, those are, you know, the ones that are non-contributing. I think, or maybe if they made a lot of changes. But I can, I would all do is, and Wendy has some connections in Bernie still.
I'd be happy to make phone calls. I mean, see if even if somebody wants to come out, I don't know. I don't know how we.
So then why don't we do that between now and the next meeting? Uh, do what you're. Style, look at architecture, maybe an idea of what the ordinance is. Just a basic framework, and we can discuss it at the next meeting and then develop it. And then once we have something, next step would be like, let's go to the business owners.
Okay.
Yeah, I could I could walk around once you get that map. You know, get a good start point there too.
And then as far as Texas, I know, we can't, I came up with a name. I asked my people for a name, and I got one. I'd have to. Bring it up and look again, do we need? Every second later. Yeah, for to kind of like, or does that come later, once we're kind of getting into the legal?
No, absolutely. And there is, Brewster County has a rep. I mean, if we could lean on them a little.
Pete Peterson.
Pete, okay. And then also Brewster County, I mean, Matt's been, and it has the Historic Commission. Right, so maybe, maybe y'all can also help.
And, yeah, I don't want to speak for the commission.
Are we allowed to like form committees that aren't official, I guess? Do that or no?
Um, you have to be careful not to create a quorum of these members, you know, whenever you're discussing and. Planning, things like that nature, um. But it wouldn't be an official city committee, unless it was formed by council.
I mean, we do have, you know, the historic. Um. What, what is it? What do I, what do I start?
What is that thing I start?
We made that the committee. And that's the intent, to be a committee to work on these types of projects.
Okay.
And, you know, we had, we had just started the groundwork, you know, bringing in, I think we had, you know, a year ago, we had. The speaker talk about the, the twenty-six reasons historic preservation benefits the city. You know, how a city, and maybe we bring some of that in. We brought somebody in, a speaker. You know, a month ago.
Right.
Um, you know, similar. With a similar, um. She went over just like her success and, you know, dealing with. Municipality, municipality.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and, and she also made some recommendations on, um. On people that we could talk to, you know, that there are, I mean, of course, a lot of these are, you know, they want to be paid. Yeah, but we, we want finds birth, find some folks that will volunteer.
And you know, Abby did discuss eventually, like, their plan was to migrate the A H A, correct me if I'm wrong, into like. Kind of a historical commission, and if that's something that. The Planning and Zoning Commission wants to recommend, if y'all want to. You know, do the research and figure out, okay, how do we do this? I mean, by all means, that's what y'all are here for, so. Yeah, I want to eventually recommend that to City Council. And I think it's great.
Yeah, so this was, I think that when, when we started Historic Alpine, or the Alpine Historical Association, because Historic Alpine was another club that we merged into. Um, the former city manager and, um. Um, building services, building services. They had the idea to tag on, you know, to, to form a historic district. But they knew that it would be time-consuming and a lot for planning and zoning to take home. So if it got to the point where we're, you know, reviewing plans, you know, if this thing kicks off to the point. To where it needs, uh, you know. A board. Or more people to, you know, to look at the details, then, then I think it would make sense. I think right now, we just need to see if it's viable.
Yeah, that's good.
Right.
Educate ourselves.
Yeah, yeah.
Looking around.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're good right now?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Okay, so I have homework. I have homework. And, um, so you all have a nice, um, presentation for the next meeting and we'll go over this.
Okay.
We'll tackle it.
Is the next meeting a workshop or a meeting?
Well.
It's gonna be a workshop.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it probably will be a meeting, because they, we usually tack the workshops on top, right?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Next item G, continuation of the discussion on the coin-operated machine ordinance. Uh. I'm thinking, if it's okay with the commission, in the interest of time, what if we table this to the next meeting? And then just continue on with H and the action items. Will that be okay?
Yes.
Okay. So then G will be tabled to the next meeting. Onto H, discuss the historical documents provided by Commissioner Branch.
These were actually pertaining to the zoning and not historic. I mean, they kind of are historic, but the recommended zoning map nineteen sixty-six, the master plan building condition survey. In the city of Alpine nineteen ninety-one land use. This, during our last meeting, we brought up, if we are going to be tackling some of the, the zoning. And, um. That we needed, I asked if we, if there was any type of city planning previously done, like, what do we? Is there something we can reference? Did somebody have a plan for Alpine? And, because we don't want to be like willy-nilly, you know. Just making decisions without having an overview for the basis. So those actually pertain to that, and I said that in my, um. You know, in, in working with Historic Association, I have come across, you know, the nineteen sixty-six business district map. And the recommended zoning map in nineteen sixty-six. And so I thought it would be at some point that we should look at those. When, when we are, um. Working on, you know, new zoning or updating the ordinances.
Were those incorporated into the, the twenty sixteen vision?
The twenty sixteen vision plan was, I don't know if it was incorporated or not, but the twenty sixteen vision plan. Was an idea of, um. You know, promoting Alpine, rebranding, um, you know, where they would, we would have an entertainment district. So, I mean, they may have, I was just, my question was, like, how, how do we know? Like, what is the plan? Like, was there a plan?
Um, I can definitely have our records person look through everything. She's doing a really phenomenal job of indexing. So, uh, I can definitely get her to look into saying if we could find anything further. You, these, if I'm not mistaken, you got from the archives, right?
The art, well, one of them, yeah, the archives, one is from the archives and, um, one, I think we found online. Yeah, so there's a, there's, I think that there, there have been a lot of studies done.
Yeah.
My hunch is there had to have been studies, and it would be nice to reference them.
Yeah, I think these would be good for, um, because we're gonna. Obviously work on updating the zoning map, but it would also be helpful to see the layers of how things have progressed through time.
Right.
And then that will help instill our comprehensive plan. Because even when we update what we've already done to Alpine with our zoning map, because we're already ten years behind on it. So, once we do that, you'll have a better i- idea where we went wrong and what we've done and where it's growing, and then. That will help us to do the comprehensive plan of the long-term future, because these are just. Through time as Alpine grew, what, what they were looking at. And so, right now, the zoning map, even that we have now, doesn't even fit what we are actually dealing with, because it has been updated. So once that's been completed, then that's when your comprehensive plan will come in, and we can use all of these as layerings of. What the original view of, obviously, it doesn't look anything like this first picture. So it's definitely grown since then. Um. And having the overlaying of the historical district would be good too, because to be able to connect that, I think will be a good idea. Because I think Alpine's gonna grow even more.
Right, yeah, and then that way, yeah, have an idea. A goal.
But I will have her look and then I'll provide you all with the documents. If we find it.
That's it. Okay, thank you very much. Next action items. Okay. Action item A. Uh, proven application for replat to allow the applicant John Caden to divide one lot into two lots. Don't need to read, if I read the whole thing.
Oh, no, that's fine. So I can just speak to that a little bit. Uh, John Cannon has submitted a replat application to divide one lot into two lots. Eight letters were sent to surrounding property owners within two hundred feet of the property notifying them of the public hearings for this item. None were, were returned as undeliverable. Uh, the required public notice was posted in the avalanche within the required timeframe. Um, that was in the January fifth edition. The zoning of the property will not change with the replat. Do you have any other questions? The, the back of documents are also included in your package as well, including the actual replat.
I drove by and took a look, um, and I didn't see any problem with dividing it into two.
Perfect.
Didn't see any problems with it either. You know, any issues?
I don't, I don't know if you guys know, but I leave a lot of record in, in, um. Pretty about pine has to be at least fifty feet wide frontage of the road. So when we were doing replating, if you have read any of the lot requirements, um, for building inside city limits. Um, we do have a square footage requirements for building and things like that, so they usually typically come and talk to me first with work. Uh, but there is not any issues with square footage with this division.
Yeah, this would seem pretty large.
Yeah.
Uh, would we approve it? Commissioner Michael, do you have any comments?
Muted.
I'm sorry, no, I do not. I was pulling up Google Earth at that moment. No, I. No.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, in that case, do we have a motion to approve that applicant's replat?
I'll make a motion that we prove this to replay.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? And we motion and a second. All those in favor of approving that application replats, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say ayes have it. Action item B. Approval app, an application for replat to allow the applicant John Scott Turner to combine lots on the subject property.
So John Scott Turner has submitted a replat application to combine lots on the project property. Six letters were sent to surrounding property owners within two hundred feet. Notifying of the, uh, them of the public hearings, none were returned. The required notice was posted in the avalanche on January fifth, and zoning of the property will not change. If y'all have any other questions about this application.
Um, what does he want to do here, Jessica?
Uh, he has no plans on building. Uh, right now, um, or previously before the replat, um, he had, I think, six, I just lost it.
I mean, I don't understand what they want to combine or.
Yeah, and there's a lot of reasons why you want to combine. I mean, for me, um, if I was going to build something. Um, so if I own six lots, just give you an example, and I had a house on one. And lot two was a vacant lot, I couldn't put an, uh, accessory structure there, so I couldn't put a, a storage shed there without a primary structure. So in order for, for him to combine all of his lots, his front yard is all the way across point A to point B, so he can do what he wants with his land.
He wants to do the whole lot.
Yeah.
As I understood.
So in order for him to add things to his property without having any issues with zoning, um.
Do what he can do that.
Okay, or if you want, if you want to build a house but across three lots, you can't do that. You have to combine those three lots. In order to be one lot for your setbacks and for everything and for your, your backyard to be a proper backyard, so.
That's not.
He doesn't have any plans for building as of now, but he could do whatever he wants with it as his, his property combined.
And it's gonna remain an R two, uh, two family, right? Okay. All right then, uh, do I have a motion to approve this applicant for replat?
I'll make a motion that we prove this for replat.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor of approving this application, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. And now action item C. Approve an application for a replat to allow the applicant Kelly DePrado to separate lots for sale.
Kelly DePrado has submitted a replat application to separate lots on the subject property in order to sell the property. Thirteen letters were sent to surrounding property owners within two hundred feet. Uh, none were returned. The required public notice was posted in the January fifth edition of the avalanche, and zoning of the property will not change. Do you have any questions regarding this application?
Yeah, what does she want to do?
Okay, so I don't know if you can see, um, page seventy-eight of eight seven on my paper. Um, originally, the houses, the house and the duplex were built on the same lot. Um, the lots were going east and west. And so in order for them to sell that duplex, they had to replat it so that it's a, it's a lot. Because you can't sell it. Way that it is.
Okay.
Um, and so she's, she has a, I don't know if you're, if you drove by, but there's a house on the corner, a garage, and then a duplex. And those were all built on the same lot. Um, and so, but she owns two lots, so she has enough square feet to separate, but she needs her, her lines to go north and south. Rather than east and west, the way they're going now. And so in order for the surveyor to correct that, and they wanted to keep the well on the, the, where it's connected to the house, so there's a little jig-jag. Um, or the well is, because they want to keep that in the property line. Uh, so in order for them to sell the house separate from the duplex, um, they have to do that.
Okay.
It's only for sale, for a big deal.
Any other questions? No, okay.
Okay.
Then do I have a motion to approve this applicant, application for replat?
No, I'll make a motion that we prove this for replat.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the applicant for a replat, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Action item D. Approve making a recommendation to the city council to establish an ordinance. That implements a requirement that letters be sent to surrounding property owners regarding proposed annexations.
So, uh.
We already discussed this at a previous meeting.
That's correct.
So this is just a formality.
We have drafted the ordinance based on your requests. And essentially, this would establish a new section in our code of ordinances, and it would direct city staff to send letters to property owners within two hundred feet. Uh, in addition to the state law requirements. And so if you approve this guy, um, an official recommendation will be sent to City Council. Recommending the establishment of this order.
Okay. We have any, uh, comments or questions from the pressures? No? Okay, then do we have a motion to approve this recommendation?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve this recommendation.
And we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving this recommendation to the city council, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Action item E. Approve the calendar year twenty twenty-three meeting schedule. Oh, okay, it's in the back. It is the third page from the back.
This was a big package.
Eighty-seven pages. And that's double.
Kill some trees.
It's that November one.
November twenty-seventh.
We had a problem with Thanksgiving this.
Is it the Monday?
Uh, yes.
I think we all voted to not do one, didn't you?
So what happened was is that we had two illnesses for this last week. I mean, it's not November one. There was two people that ended up making a mistake, but y'all had agreed to have that meeting.
Oh, that's okay.
Um, so yes, that would be the Monday after Thanksgiving.
Do you want to change that date?
Keep in mind that in December, typically, planning is only does already, so if there's any, you know, procedural permit approvals, things of that nature. They might be held up two months.
That's a long way off.
Be considered by city councils.
How about if we have it the Monday prior to Thanksgiving?
Yeah, I can certainly change today, um.
You think that would be easier for us if we added the Monday prior to Thanksgiving, that we don't have to worry about the holidays?
Well, people are trying to get ready to go somewhere though, too.
If we approve it today, can we not change it later?
Yes, y'all can still change it there. It's just basically setting a template of what we're planning on doing, that you don't need to change it.
I'm fine with either.
So then let's, uh, I, I would suggest, let's go ahead and prove it as is. And then, uh, when we get closer to November, we can look at maybe. Adjusting the date according to our needs. Is that okay? Okay. Then can I have a motion to approve the calendar year twenty twenty-three?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three meeting calendar.
Okay, I have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the calendar year twenty twenty-three, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it. Thank you. Action item F. Point the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So one of the changes that ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-two dash ten dash zero three implemented was that. So one of the changes that ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-two dash ten dash zero three implemented was that each board commissioner committee will report their officers. So this is being added, so the commission can actually solidify that appointment. Uh, have the discussion who wants to reach it. And the other two was in the.
Just discussion?
Y'all would actually appoint the chair tonight, so right now it is, I'm it, appointed by council, but. If y'all want to continue with Amet being chairs, that's fine, you would just resolidify that appointment now that you make some decision now, council.
Chair, he's fun.
Great.
And then you would just need to make a motion, ask that.
Okay, I make a motion. That we approve on it. As the chair keeps sitting right where he's at.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, eyes have it, thank you very much, appreciate it. Uh, action item G, appoint the vice chair of the planning and zoning commission.
I think we should do that, Abby. On that one.
Do we have to nominate or?
Yes.
I'd be in the vice chair or I'm finding anybody to be in.
I just need to make a motion.
So then let's, uh. Make a motion to elect Abby as the vice chair.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To appoint her as vice chair, planning and zoning.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of the appointments, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you.
Congratulations.
And finally, action item H, appoint the secretary of the planning and zoning commission.
What is the?
So typically, the vice chair could take over the duties of secretary if needed, but, um. Really meant for in case I have to miss, they would keep up with who made the motion, who seconded, what the motion was and keep a record. So then they can get it to our office and we could. You know, make the minutes, process them and get them back to y'all for approval. But the biggest reason is in case I am ever absent.
So if you're, yeah, like.
The Bahamas, here you go.
He deserves it.
Yeah, he does.
Y'all.
Because.
I agree.
So.
Does, how about Wendy?
That is fine, right.
Yes.
That's a job I can handle.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion then to, uh, accept Wendy as the secretary?
I have a motion that we appoint Wendy as our secretary.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I have a second, you're doing a lot of motion.
We have a motion, a second to accept the appointments, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. So that is the end of the action items. Last item is, uh, board member comments. And, uh, I will start it off. Uh, by saying, uh, I don't say this enough to you, Gio, but, uh, I really appreciate all the hard work you put in. Every month, putting our packets together.
Thank you.
Uh, we won't be able to do our job without you, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I don't know if Gio told you all that, but I, I have resigned from the board. I'm just hanging in here right now until someone else takes a seat. But I think right now, this is the best board I've seen since I've been on it.
She's been on for a long time.
And now she leaves, I don't know, it's been a long. I'm thinking twenty-three years, yeah, it's close to eight years, I said, wow, it'd be eight, I don't know, but it's been a long time. Since back when Fitzgerald was still on the board, I think he's the one that pointed me when they go. Yeah. So this old crowbait's ready to retire from this board, but I will be here until someone is appointed anyways, is Sarah?
I talked to her.
Ocean.
And said, you know.
Okay, that's why she's not talking to me.
I'm wanting your balls.
You know anybody in Ward Three, let us know.
It's a hard one, too.
It is.
It's a hard one, most of us, there's one, no, that's, she's in the county, I don't know, it's, I've been thinking and thinking who could do it, and I just. Everybody on my street's board patrol or DPS or FBI, they don't want to.
Which one, so Ward Three, that's.
Near the middle school.
That's, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And goes off to where I live on Ted Street.
Okay.
All through there.
Any other comments?
Welcome, Matt, welcome, Matt.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything you'd like to say, Commissioner Michael?
Uh, no, thanks for letting me zoom in.
Thank you, we're glad we have you. All right, if there are no other comments, then, uh, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.